Could we call the meeting to order now, please? Again, let's all stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
All allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of each its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Business meeting, this business meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Zoom in compliance with RSU Number 38 Policy BED Remote Participation in School Board Meetings. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted on marinacook.org YouTube channel. Please be aware that during the course of this meeting, microphones of the viewing audience will be used except during the identified portions of public comments at this meeting. For today's agenda, this is number five. If you would like to speak during the public comment times, please use the chat features to signal this is Diane McGregor and she will be here at the board chair. In-person speakers, please sign up on the clipboard by the door. All individuals that wish to speak, whether in person or virtually, please identify yourself with first and last name, the town you live in. Please note that individuals that do not live in our member communities may or may not be granted permission to speak at the discretion of the board chair. We also ask that speakers limit their individual comments to two minutes, and if someone speaks ahead of you that has a similar view, please reference their comments. We thank you in advance for constructive comments.
So attendance and votes will be done through a roll call, so please remember the correct procedure is yes, which would be approved, no, which is to disapprove, and then to abstain as well. I'm going to quickly do a roll call vote. I want to make sure everyone here can hear each other and we can hear Tyler, who I know is already online. So very quickly, Wendy.
Here.
Kristin.
Here.
David G.
Here.
Annie.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Here.
Great. Christine.
Here.
Leslie.
Here.
Patricia.
Here.
Rebecca.
Here.
Sean.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Kelty.
Here.
David T.
Here.
And our student reps, Abby Hale.
Here.
Ann Wyatt.
Here.
Thank you. Everyone is pleasure. So what we're going to do is go into nomination process for our board officers for the coming school year. I'm just going to review the way that we're going to run this. I obviously am no one speaking, but I will just kind of facilitate this. So I will open the floor up in just a few minutes for nominations. And please remember, all nominations have to have a second in order to be able to be kind of on the ballot, so to speak. Whoever is nominated will then be given an opportunity to speak very quickly about like why they would like to have the chair position. We will go in the order of the nominations. When that is done, then we will do a vote, and again, we'll have to do it through a roll call vote here. So just so you know, then we will do the same exact process with the vice chair, and at that point, once the vice chair has been determined, then I will turn it back over to the new school board chair. Is everyone okay? Are there any questions or comments? It's like, let's start with the biggest thing right on the agenda here. All right, so if everyone's okay and there are no questions, then I am at this point opening the floor for nominations for the board chair for the 23, 24 school year. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Sean Roderick for board chair.
Second.
Who was second? I didn't know if those got my.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations? I'm about to sleep time, I want to do another watch. If there are no other nominations, I would like to close the nomination process. And Sean, I'd like to give you an opportunity if you'd like to speak without being the board chair.
Yeah, sure. First, my name's Sean Roderick. I live in Reed Field. I've been on the board since, I believe, 2013 or 2014, since my daughter's in eighth grade and now she's in eighth grade. So it's been a while. I kind of, I first got on the, I never expected to honestly be on the board this long. I signed up to volunteer for a volunteer role in the town of Reed Field, and I was going to be on the board, and then I got a call on my way there from the late town manager, Stefan, saying, "We're going to nominate you for the school board instead." And it's been quite a ride. I've served on many different negotiations. I've served on different committees, have been through the COVID era, have been through, gotten to know a lot of teachers, a lot of board members, a lot of members in the community, and happy to work with everybody to make this a successful year.
Well, thank you very much, Sean. Since there are no other nominees, I'm just going to do a roll call vote and let me know either yes, you approve Sean, or no, you do not want to vote for Sean. Everyone got their vote ready? All right, so running right through the list. Wendy.
No.
Kristin.
Yes.
David G.
Yes.
Annie.
Yes.
Tyler.
Now.
Christine.
I'd like to vote no, but I, can I say why? Or is that not appropriate?
Exactly, you shouldn't be opposed to the people.
Yeah.
So it's a no. Okay. Leslie.
Yes.
Patricia.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Sean. Brian.
Yes.
Kelty.
Yes.
David T.
Yes.
Abby Hale.
No.
Mike.
Yes.
I'm counting nine yeses of board members. I'm looking at Donna to make sure I've got the same. I go one, two, three, no's, and one abstentions. That one you got, Donna? All right. So Carrie, Sean, you are the new board chair.
Thank you.
While they switch positions, I will do the same process for the vice chair, but I'll give them a minute to switch, and then I will turn it over to Sean right after that.
So I.
Vice chair, and then I'll give it to you. So having said that, the floor is now open for vice chair nominations. Do I have any?
I nominate Christine Shay for vice chair.
Christine, is there a second?
I'll second.
What was who did she nominate?
Christine.
Tyler nominated Christine. And Wendy did second it? I know Christine, you were going to nominate.
I was, I wanted to nominate Rebecca Lambert. Second.
And who was that second?
Me.
Thank you. Before I go any further, are you already checked that nomination?
I really appreciate that nomination, but I just don't feel like I have enough experience as a board member to take on something like that at this point. So I would highly recommend nominating Rebecca Lambert.
So are you declining the nomination?
I'm declining the nomination, thank you.
Absolutely, I'm going to do that then. All right, so we do, are there any other nominations for vice chair before I go any further? Again, practicing wait time. All right, not hearing any more Rebecca's being sole candidate, but I would like to give Rebecca a chance to speak about being the vice chair. I'll turn it over to you.
Well, I've been on the board for about five-ish years now. I think I have a pretty good handle on how the board works and the committees, and I've been in on negotiations and different committees, and I really enjoy my time on the board, and I'd be happy to serve as vice chair.
Excellent, thank you, Rebecca. So having said that, we'll do the same process, we'll know yes or no for Rebecca since she is the single candidate. Again, I'm going to use a roll call vote for that. Wendy.
Yes.
Kristin.
Yes.
David G.
Yes.
Annie.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Leslie.
Yes.
Patricia.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Same.
Sean.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kelty.
Yes.
David T.
Yes.
Abby Hale.
Yes.
Ann Wyatt.
Yes.
So again, it looks like 12 yeses and one abstentions, so congratulations Rebecca for the vice chair for the 23, 24 school year. And having said that, I am going to turn the agenda back over to Sean. True, I know we're throwing in thoughts.
No worries. So now we're going to do this, are there students? Do you have a student representative?
So I did check with both schools. They will be here next month. We've only had, what, seven days of school, so that's not set up yet, but they will be here next month, okay?
All right, moving on, we're going to hear a report from RSU 38 auditor Ron Smith.
Smith, I'm a principal with RHR Smith &amp; Company. I'm here to go over your 22 audit. It was done, it's been done for some time. I think it was just more of the schedules, you know, aligning here through summer to get to this board meeting. But I'm the principal of RHR Smith &amp; Company. We do over 250 school systems in the state of Maine and Vermont, and a lot of municipalities, a lot of counties, so we know who you are, what you are, and I'm just going to hit the highlights of the 22 audit, and we're already engaged in the 23 audit, you know, right now, but financially, you guys got our highest opinion, you know, no issues that we noted, and certainly if we did, we'd have to note them in our audit reports, you had an unmodified opinion. Because you spent more than $2.5 million, $750,000, of which $1.5 million was ESAR funds, we had to expand your audit to a compliance audit. ESAR was the program that we audited for this fiscal year, which is typical for all the school systems. We found no compliance findings or issues in the compliance audit for your federal funds over $750,000, which was the ESAR program. Financially, your fund balance, carryover balance grew from $1.7 million to $2 million, about $60,000 more than what it was the year before. That was largely in part to revenues, special education and, you know, regular instruction being underspent, and I believe, you know, that was close to $700,000 of like, close to $1.1 million of that. You actually expected your fund balance to go down, you know, by a million dollars. It didn't. It went up by 200,000. So that's the good news, and largely in part to you not spending that money for special education and regular instruction. And that's typically what we're seeing with the school systems out there. Up until '23, we're starting to see that number start to level back off where regular instruction and special education, that's getting back to pretty much what you budgeted is what you spent, and, you know, we'll start seeing that in '23, coming out of the COVID, you know, era. That's starting to get back to some normality. We're seeing less, less carryover resulting from underspent appropriations now in '23, and we've probably got over 150 audits, and that's, that's pretty consistent, you know, with what we're seeing for your school system as well. Really no other issues. I mean, food services in a healthy position, your enterprise fund are in a healthy position, your school system's in a healthy position. Yeah, that's, that's the highlights.
All right, any questions?
That's great news.
Listen, sometimes they don't roll this way, and about a month ago, it didn't roll this way, so this is a good conversation for me. And I think the other thing to note, too, is a transition from your longstanding businessman Bridgette to Mandy. I think it's gone great, you know, and certainly, you know, Mandy wants to learn, Mandy, you know, wants to understand how to, you know, fill that chair and, you know, make the right decisions, and she's done nothing but reaching out to us, and we look forward to providing her the same support that we have done for you, Bridgette, in the past.
All right, I think we're good if there's no more questions. Thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Mandy.
Yeah.
All right, are there any citizens' comments? Nope. All right, nobody online?
All right, all. Nope, Diane's all set.
Okay, thanks, Diane. All right, are there any additions or adjustments to the agenda?
I do have one thing to add, and I have to look at number eight, M, an appointment for Ken Fletcher as a middle school teacher. So again, that's eight, M, appointing Ken Fletcher as a middle school teacher. Her information is in the folders. My only one.
Anyone else have anything they want to add? Next on the agenda, this report.
Yes. So Michelle, do you have volunteer celebration? If you don't mind sharing, I think it's really good news, if you don't mind sharing.
We just had, we just came back from open house, and if you've read all the material I send out, you know, we're really talking about, a lot about attendance, and not only attendance, but also like presence, participating in class and engaging, cell phones and stuff. I just had to share two really remarkable fact statistics that came out of this year, one of which, and, you know, both Wyatt and Abby can attest to it, every year, we have a ninth grade orientation day, and Marana Cook's unique in that they ask 12th graders to also attend that day. Some schools will have student helpers, but we really ask all 12th graders to welcome in our ninth graders, and that can be hard, like they have jobs at the end of summer, and our attendance from seniors kind of goes up and down. Every senior attended, with the exception of one, when he was sick. Isn't that awesome? And like, all the ninth graders attended except for two, again, for good reason. And then the other thing is on day one, that same day, we had 174 students signed up for extracurriculars, all of which were sports at that time. So never mind adding on our theater students, auditions for Les Mis are going on now, never mind adding music, and we do have a uniquely overlapping group, lots of folks in the high school do both sports and other activities. So there is some overlap, but with music and math team, and never mind all of the activities that we know matter to achievement in school, many of which we don't know about, you might dance outside of school, open your church, you might be an Eagle Scout, like all of those things are linked to achievement in school. So we'll be well over 200 students involved in school activities alone, which is more than half of our 365 students, and I've never been in a school with a participation rate higher than 25%. So 50%, and if you, you know, if you type in "school participation, high schools in Maine," the first article that comes up is from the Press Herald about declining participation rates. So it says something about this community, and I wanted to share that.
Thank you very much, Michelle. That is to be applauded for sure. Congratulations.
Then when other reports, people have questions? Uh, Leslie.
Nope, I was swatting a fly.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were putting hands. I know, there's one. I just wanted to say, in the high school, I love the cell phone policy. I think that's great, so good work, everyone who was involved in that.
Can you, is there a new cell phone policy? I didn't.
If you read Michelle's, I just can miss.
In her, Michelle reported to the board.
Thanks.
Yeah, you would like to, that'd be great, because I think it's awesome.
I apologize that I haven't gotten to that yet. I, work has been at the beginning.
Through a really collaborative process with leadership team and admin at the high school, coming up through teachers, counselors, nurses, everybody at the high school, really trying to take on, really aiming for two goals, two stated goals, one of which Cal and I can speak to, like improving our culture outside of class, that the texting and meeting in the bathroom, and it just wasn't leading to good behavior, safe behavior. So we had a behavioral goal for changing some cell phone procedures, but we also had a, much like I spoke to a minute ago, participation in class, engagement in class, like we're investing in what we know matters the most, excellent instruction. And so having students, and yet, it's what they do that matters to their learning, not what we do. So they have to be doing it, and when they're on their phones, they're not doing it. And so we crafted, really prioritized academic time. So, and the hope is, the aim is to make sense to every student or human who's hearing it. It's not arbitrary. It's academic time, it's four times, class time, media time, like in the library, that is meant to be academic support time, study halls. So just because you have a study hall doesn't mean it's a downtime, doesn't mean you sign out, doesn't, it means you use it. And if you're not using it, you're reading, you're connecting with a friend, you're playing chess, you're doing the things that humans do to learn from each other, and then the last is tag time. So what that left us was everything else was some time that they had a lot more freedom, lunch, hallways. There are schools out there that are, you know, banning really across the board, not having it in school at all, but this is really where we wanted to start. It was something that we felt was consistent with what teachers could support and that students would support as well. So we do have some focus groups, I'm going to do some focus groups, feed everybody pizza and ask lots of questions, but one of them will be around cell phones. I'll be interested in what they say to me then, I'll be interested in what these two school board members would say to you if you ask them, you know, I think it'll be very interesting. We have some surveys going out, we're going to gather some data as the year goes on and how it's working. But I will tell you one anecdotal story from today. I have five people who left their cell phones in the pockets today. They were so involved in their classes and their friends and their life that they left the room without them.
I love it.
So.
Thank you so much for doing that. I wish my kids could go back to high school and have you as the principal. I think it's really important to check that and I'm sure getting anything.
Honestly, it only works because we're all doing it. Any one teacher, if any, if anybody was sending a mixed message, it would not go well, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? And that was.
Is it a natural question to ask where the middle school stands on this, or am I just ahead of the people?
Rick, are you okay to speak to it?
Oh, no.
I'll give you five.
I think you, the middle school is at a pretty longstanding expectation that cell phones are off in the students' backpack for the duration of the school day. There is some discretion by the advisor at the end of the day, as this is a typical means for parents to touch base with after-school plans, change of venue if, you know, athletics are canceled, it's just a really easy way for communication these days, so with the discretion of the advisor, if a student does ask at the end of the day, "Hey, can I text my mom, check my phone, see what the plan is for the afternoon?" Then we do allow that, but the expectation is it's a quick, you know, text, and the phone goes right back in the backpack.
Okay, so this was an existing policy for middle school and sort of new high school?
Correct, yeah.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Leslie, I'll just let you know that in all of my travels in the middle school over the years, I have never seen a cell phone during school hours, just so that you know, they, it's pretty well established.
Deputy Nate, if you want to quickly introduce yourself, that'd be great, I know you're new to all, some people have met you, so not to put you on the spot.
Hello, everybody. Deputy Nate, I work for the County Sheriff's Office. I, one of the great things is, I grew up in Mount Vernon, and I went to this middle school, and I went to high school here, so it's kind of just coming full circle back to, you know, what I'm familiar with. So I've been spending a lot of time this first week trying to, you know, get in touch with all the kids so they can see my face, and out to the elementary schools, and really try to get kids comfortable with law enforcement, and just have them understand that we're safe, safe people to go to, and just working on some of the different blueprints and like security of the schools, so that's kind of exactly what we're moving towards.
Welcome.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. Deputy Nate has already been instrumental in several minor, I'm not going to say they're major, but minor situations, his insight and his knowledge have been very, very helpful already, and I know he doesn't probably even realize how much of help he's been, so thank you very much, we're glad to have you.
Oh, quick question for Deputy Nate. You don't have to get up. What are, what would you like the kids to call you, how to address you? Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Sorry, that's what Austin's on calling him. Anyone else? All right, moving on to action items.
Well, I'm going to do subcommittees.
Oh, subcommittees.
So in your packet, on page 11 of 38, it's Regal 7B, you will see our various committees. The head of that first page, on page 11, is the subcommittees. Please note that we always called it the negotiation committee, we're looking to change it to the personnel committee and give it a few more responsibilities other than this negotiation. But one of the things I wanted to let the board know is, we have two contracts that we will be negotiating this year, the support staff and the professional teacher staff one as well. So it's going to be a little bit of a heavier load than in most years when it comes to negotiation, and there's a few other things that the personnel committee, I think, needs to get involved in as well. So that, I just want to be very honest with people, it's probably going to be the biggest lift and be the most time-consuming committee this year, so just a word of warning. So as you're thinking about it, what we've traditionally done in the past is people will sign up for what committees they want, and I'm getting ahead of myself, so I apologize. If you turn the page, you'll see the other committees where there's board representation and ad hoc committees as well. We're trying to get at least one person, each board member, we have 13, to participate in at least one committee, and obviously there's room for more, so if you have the time and availability, we'd love to have you do that. What I would ask you to do is read those carefully. Page 13 is a draft of the committees and who from last year was on those particular committees. What I would ask you to do is to submit to Donna either this piece of paper, or you can send her an email. What we'll do is pull everything together, and then Sean and I will meet and go over, and we'll kind of guide the. and we'll kind of guide the nomination wise that at the next board meeting, if that's okay with anyone. And of course, I can answer any questions or I can, or people that are on committees can also answer questions.
I have a quick question about that. Is that okay? So are we encouraged to sign up for a different committee if we're already an established committee member?
No, if you would like to stay on the same committee, you want to let us know that. Okay, but you don't necessarily have to change unless you'd like to.
So if we, if you have it filled out, where would you like this to be?
Donna, yes, please. She'll collect it all for us.
Right.
Any other questions? If you have any questions, please reach out. The judge and myself, the judge and Sean as well. And Donna can also help if there's any questions on the committees.
No, 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 no.
All right.
All right, I think that's it for some of these questions. All right, now on to action items. Approval of minutes of the June 14th, 2023 board meeting.
I move, we approve the minutes of June 14th, 2023 board meeting.
Second.
Discussion?
Quick question. Sean, I was just here. Do I abstain from this vote by being skeptical?
Generally what people do.
I'll be sure.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll call for a vote.
Okay, so Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yeah.
David G?
Yeah.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine? Leslie? Patricia?
Abstain.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Abstain.
Kelsey?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
Abigail?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Abstain.
All right.
Yes.
Approval of minutes of the June 21st, 2023 special board meeting.
I move, we approve the minutes of the special board meeting on June 21st.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote.
All righty, Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Stain.
David G?
Stain.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Abstain.
Leslie?
Stain.
Patricia?
Abstain.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Abstain.
Kelsey?
Yeah.
David T?
Yes.
And Abigail?
Stain.
And Wyatt? Seven yeses.
All right, we're going to lay it along, acceptance of donations.
I move, we approve the donations as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yeah.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Leslie?
Stain.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
Abigail?
Yes.
And Wyatt?
Abstain.
All right, next up is ratification of appointment of Wayne Elementary Principal Jeanette Cheeks.
I move that we ratify the appointment of Wayne Elementary Principal Jeanette Cheeks.
Second.
Question and second, discussion? All right.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen, excuse me?
Yeah.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
Yes.
And Wyatt?
Yes.
Ratification of appointment, middle school assistant principal Angie Kelly.
I move to support the superintendent's appointment of Angie Kelly as middle school assistant principal.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yeah.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
Abigail?
Yes.
And Wyatt?
Yes.
All right, ratification of teacher resignations accepted during the summer.
Second.
All right.
And there is in your packets, I apologize, Sean, for cutting you off, in your packets, excuse me, no, I believe it's in your folders, right? There was a list of that for you. Yes, official resignations, and it's in your manila folder there, just so that you have copies of all of them.
All right, discussion now?
I'm wondering if anybody did interview?
Yes, we have that information. Yeah, and we'll be working with the subcommittee on that.
The other discussion? So, so according to your emails, all the positions are filled now in status.
We have, yeah, we have, as far as teaching positions, we have an elementary music position that's still open, but we have it covered temporarily. And we are skilled down one more middle school position. Right, exactly. Those are the two teaching positions. I know it's a lot of people.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, call for a vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yeah.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yeah.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
Abigail?
Yes.
And Wyatt?
All right, ratification of teachers hired during the summer.
I move, we have ratified the teachers that were hired during the summer.
Second.
All right, have been moved in second. End of discussion? Just having met some of them at the middle school, there's a lot of great teachers that I feel have been hired. I know my son has one and met a lot of them at the middle schools. All right, call for a vote. All righty, Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yeah.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
Abigail?
Yes.
And Wyatt?
Yes.
Consideration of one year leave of absence, Laura Dory, MEF teacher.
I move, we consider one year leave of absence for Laura Doherity, the MEF teacher?
Second.
All right, second, discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, we'll call for a vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yeah.
David G?
Yeah.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
Yes.
And Wyatt? Again, yes.
All right, consideration of three month, January 1st, April 1st, 2024, leave of absence, Sarah Morale Health Center Director.
I move, we approve the three month leave of absence from January 1st to April 1st, 2024, for Sarah Morale Health Center Director.
Second.
Okay, have been moved in second. Discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, we'll call for a vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yeah.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
Abigail?
Yes.
And Wyatt?
Yes.
Again, yes.
All right, our number J, consideration of four month, March to June 2024, leave of absence, Albert Datt, high school teacher.
I move, we consider the consideration of four month, March to June 2024, leave of absence of Abby Calverdatt, high school teacher.
Second.
All right, have been moved in second. Discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yeah.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
Abigail?
Yes.
And Wyatt?
Yes.
So again, yes.
All right, ratification of bids accepted over the summer purchase of multi-functional vehicle, sale of obsolete sewing machines.
I move that we ratify the bids accepted over the summer for the purchase of a multi-functional functional vehicle and sale of obsolete sewing machines.
Second.
All right, have been moved in second. Any discussion? Uh, Leslie?
Just a question on being new, whether this was a part of previous budget. Anyway, the new vehicle, was that already in part?
Yes, it had been included.
Because I know some things had gone in, some had gone out, so I'm just trying to keep.
No, good question.
All right, any other questions? I was checking to see if we sold the sewing machine.
Did we?
We sold two out of four and then put them up a second time for the other two. I have those two sold too. So now it's two out of four, two out of five, I always forget.
Am I allowed to buy one?
So, yeah.
Am I allowed to buy one?
Absolutely.
At the beginning, we're bidding again. Who do I talk to?
Rick would love to move those sewing machines. They're in his building here.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? All right, go ahead.
I know it's a, it's a lot of money, but it's just, where's that going?
The money goes back into the general, it goes back into the general fund. That is also a very good question.
And were the technical schools called like first before general?
They don't, they don't have, they don't have sewing.
All right, I guess we'll call for a vote.
All righty, Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yeah.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yeah.
David T?
Yes.
Abigail?
Yes.
And Wyatt?
Yes.
Again, yes.
All right, nomination of Mount Vernon Elementary School Principal Michelle Hood.
I move to support the superintendent's nomination of Kim Fletcher to the position of middle school teacher.
We want to do Michelle Hood first.
Oh, we do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So I move to support the superintendent's nomination of Michelle Hood to the position of Mount Vernon Elementary School Principal.
Second.
Have been moved in second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll call for a vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yeah.
David G?
Yes, and welcome.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
And Wyatt?
Yes.
Again, yes.